You start with our last one.
Styler. Styler. And then here. So I. Who starts? One more.
All right.
You did. Even.
The joint meeting of the Mohammed City Board of Education and Village of Mohammed is called to order. It is 7:00 PM, Monday, April 29th. At this time, I'd like to remind everyone, please sign in, silence your cell phones. I'd also like to remind our visitors that in order to facilitate an effective meeting, we ask those who wish to make comments to the board reading the visitor guidelines found on the table outside the door and complete the attached public participation form. It goes over to Jody. Public participation is only allowed during the public participation portions of the meeting. Other than those times, board meetings are not interactive with those amendments. Uh, what call? Obravi.
Here.
Arps.
Here.
Metzger.
Here.
Auger.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Whitehinder.
Here.
Vanaster.
Yes, here.
Jordan. Jordan.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
McComb.
Here.
Brock.
Here.
Severance.
Here.
McMurray.
Here.
Uh, let's stand for the project.
I'd like to.
... In the United States of America. Integritty, republic, for which stands one nation under law. Indictment, assault, with liberty and justice for all.
You have had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? So. Can I have a second? That was better.
Seven.
Thank you. And this can be a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye. All those opposed? Excellent. Agenda is approved. Uh, any public comment? No. Okay. All right, we are on to regular business. I want to welcome everybody tonight. Thank you all for coming. Thanks for joining us, uh, this evening. This is an opportunity for us as the village board and as the school board to come together and have conversations around ways to make, um, our partnership stronger. That was a theme that we heard quite a bit last summer during our listening tour or the listening, um, sessions with people in the community that they want to see that we are working together and we're being transparent in our conversations with one another. Um, so tonight is really about finance. Before we jump into that, I do want to acknowledge, um, very quickly and thank, uh, everybody who responded very, very quickly to the Alice drill that unexpectedly went off, um, at the schools. We had, uh, amazing response from our first responders, but also our staff and our teachers and our administrators. As a board, we are working with Dr. Lee to kind of process through all of that and figure out what our next steps are and how to make things even better. Um, we're not going to talk about that a lot tonight, but I did want to acknowledge it and make sure that people know we are going to be revisiting that at an upcoming, um, business meeting.
I'd like to add, I also was proud of how the students responded.
Absolutely, yeah. Um, so tonight is all about money and kind of how the finances work, both for the, uh, school district as well as the village. Um, I think we're going to start with the village financing first from the movement of the school district. But at any point in time, jump in if you have questions, um, comments, if you need further clarification.
Good. Uh, next slide. Next slide. So just a reminder of what we've been, uh, I guess aiming towards and making progress on. We had our first quarterly, talk about growth, that time, talk about finance, 101. We'll touch a little bit on the TIP districts, um, or at least the financing side of those, that thing, the money side of it. But we definitely intend to get a little bit more in the weeds, have a TIP specific meeting next time. So, um, obviously, any questions we can address tonight, spark or how the money flows through and that, we can certainly answer. But I think we definitely, um, from our standpoint in our constituents as well as yours, probably a lot of confusion around TIPS. Uh, it's a definitely complicated subject and topic. So, you know, what we can do to try and clear the air with a little bit, because you're going to find pluses and minuses on both sides of the TIP issue. It's just more about what works for, for us, uh, in our community, both from the village and the specific sector. So just kind of throw down a little bit precursor on the discussion of NIOT. But then, yeah, after that, like, community planning and then common goal setting session. So we're on track as best we can with, uh, you know, pretty, uh, aggressive goal of having these on quarterly basis. Certainly a lot of work from our staff to get these pulled together. Certainly, uh, we're in the middle of budget season for us. So asking, uh, this for finance was timely, but also, uh, probably a little bit taxing on Patrick and Carol, but that's okay. Uh, so I want to give a pay.
I agree.
It's like a big thing for us today. So, uh, anyway, so finance, no one, not too much for me other than just welcome and thank you everybody for coming. And we have a full room tonight. It's nice to see, because we've had, uh, a couple missed last time, so that was unfortunate, but, uh, good room tonight. So I look forward to the discussion and hopefully answering any questions we have or taking action about this meeting. So on that, my hand over to really, I think, Patrick, I'm not sure, Dr. Lee, who was from the district?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Dr. Lee, yep.
All right, the first slide, we're actually appropriation ordinance. Um, just to explain that, uh, for those who don't really understand, our fiscal year runs May 1 through April 30th. Um, typically, you know, we really can't approve appropriation ordinance till we have all of our year-end numbers in, which is going to take us really until a couple of weeks. And then we have to advertise for the appropriation ordinance for hearing. Um, by law, this is the only requirement that we have to do to expend money. We could just do our appropriation ordinance, but you're going to kind of see what that looks like in a second. That's all we'd have to do. But we do, uh, we do have, um, uh, next slide. We do have, um, kind of an operating budget that each of the departments, uh, really follows as an everyday operating budget. They follow the operating budget, not the appropriated amount that can be, uh, spent. Uh, usually what we do is we add about 10% to the, um, to the operating number, and that's where we get the appropriation ordinance number. Plus, we also, um, have an appropriated item for contingencies, about 300,000. Sometimes that is a little lower, but it's been about 300,000 since we've been upwards toward, um, the $30 million range in terms of our ordinance. Um, this is also serves as what the property tax levy is based on in December. So, um, again, all this is required by law, uh, and that's, uh, what we approved in the month of May. Now, we, we could approve it and, and we have before in June, not since I've been involved in this, but we, we can approve it in July or we have to do it in the first one. Uh, we always typically do it in, uh, June, so, or May, sorry. Next slide. Um, this is, um, we already covered that, go ahead. The, this is appropriation ordinance. Um, this is how, of course, it's legal form in terms of an ordinance, but this, these are the appropriated amounts for fiscal year 24, which ends tomorrow, by the way. And Sean said, we're in the midst of budget coming out tomorrow as our tentative budget. And that's kind of what I listed there under that FY 2025. It's really an estimate that, that say $31 million is probably going to give or take, um, maybe, knock on wood, give or take $100,000 hopefully, or a couple hundred thousand. Uh, but that's probably where we'll end up being. I've taken the liberty of starring, and I'm calling it restricted funds, but, um, it's not exactly restricted funds in every case. Um, everything not starred is really our operating from our general fund. And those are our main departments of police, transportation, actually not main departments, police, transportation administration, planning and development, engineering, code compliance, as to... Then you get into the, uh, these, the, the enterprise funds, as they're known, is the water and wastewater funds. They're really operated as an independent business, really. You know, think about across the interstate, you have San Juan Valley Public Water. It's, it's a water district. And Champagne has Urbana, Champagne Sanitary District. So this is really operated as a separate entity. Uh, there's no co-mingling of water, wastewater in with general corporate or anything like that. Um, they're, they're, and that's how they have to be handled. Uh, separate from that, parks and rec, we kind of all know about that. We'll get into that a little bit for, and I had a couple slides, but recreation, parks, those are departments, yes, but they're, they under, they operate as a separate fund. Um, if, if we had an issue, could we transfer money into that? Well, we actually do, we do transfer some money from general corporate into that as well. Motor fuel tax. I'll bring a couple of things here in general, just to bring to some attention, just in case anyone notices what, uh, is, is really noticeable. Why is parks appropriation ordinance 1.3 billion in, in, in the current fiscal year that ends tomorrow? Why is it 523,000 in, uh, beginning May 1? Well, that's because we spent 840, 804,000 in capital projects. When we have capital projects, just like you can look into the TIP items, when we have the big South Mohammed Road and we're expending those balances down for a big, major, major project, those appropriated monies, those expenses are really high. So as those come down, you do see fluctuations, especially in some of the capital funds. And when, uh, parks and rec had grant money coming in and, and other things to do, the tennis courts, I mean, that was an eight, that was a million dollar project. So that, uh, those numbers kind of fluctuate a little bit. Um, okay, next slide.
Ask a question real quick.
Sure.
Um, why do you expect motor fuel tax to go down?
Okay, mentally cover that too, thank you. And I highlighted that on my, uh, motor fuel tax. Explain motor fuel tax. Um, motor fuel tax, um, for the last, say, three or four years, dating back three or four years, the state from their big transportation budget they did a few years ago, uh, created a fund called, so we'll call it RBI money. What's that saying?
It's out there.
Renewal, it's a renewal fund. So we got a lot more money coming in from the capital building state, and that goes into the MFT fund to be spent on projects. So we are, um, the last two years, we have been spending that. I think we have a little bit more money in our budget this year to spend, but that was probably $500,000. So we're spending a lot more in the last two years, spending quite a bit less in this year. The way we operate that fund, and we'll cover a little bit of this in a second, but is, as a matter of policy, we spend, we always leave a balance of what we bring in in the sort of fiscal year. We, we approved this money actually in, in January, we have turned it into state. So we actually, we always have a pretty good one-year balance in that fund every year. So quite honestly, in this one, we've already, but we probably are sitting on about 300 extra thousand. So next time, fiscal year 26, we'll probably spend a little bit higher about in that one too, just to get our balance back where it should be, because why wouldn't we sit on that money if we can continue new projects? So we'll do a little bit more in the next fiscal year, but that's why I'm on the side. So that's some extra money we got from the state. What's, what's dropped?
Four million in the TIP.
Uh, South Mohammed Road being constructed and paid for. So we'll be, you know, we'll be, we projected, we presented this before. We can cover it next meeting, of course, but I think we're projecting, I mean, we've had probably a balance after we all send this out, it's under a million dollars now. And, you know, probably get down to half a million dollars. Uh, you're always going to have enough money in your balance that you have to make your bond payment. We're making bond payments. So you're always going to have a high balance, you know, upwards for several hundred thousand dollars plus any planned, uh, capital project as well. So, but this will be the last, you know, multi-million dollar capital project. So we do.
Before you jump off this, so kind of, he started, start a bunch of lines here, and I would say there's probably a hard and soft restricted funds. I would say hard, that's enterprise funds where we just, you have no choice legally. You have to do it that way. There's other ones that we have enacted by the policy or by ordinance of allocating certain things, right? So maybe talk about utility tax or where that goes, that's a good example.
Yeah, utility tax, um, we, we, that's money we get from utilities that are taxed. The, the, for instance, um, Amherst bills are taxed. Uh, when the village did that back in 98, um, and institute that type tax, money was allocated to really half-please-half parks, and we've kept that up this entire time, half-please-half park. The first eight, 10 years, whatever, was paid for. The village purchased the old Carl Clinic, which is where the police department sits today, and moved Parks and Rec, staff member in there as well as a much smaller police department. So that paid off that building cost for several years to pay off that loan basically or bond to buy that building. So since then, half the money goes to, back to general corporate or into general corporate that then funds the police budget, helps fund the police budget, and half the money goes to the parks budget for park projects and other park, it is operated.
So that's an example we did by ordinance, but, you know, obviously, if, if we wanted to change that, we could, it's not a hard one, that's for sure. Like some of the other things that we talked about.
Obviously, commercial cores and, and the Eastwood TIP restricted. The, um, water treatment plant reserve is really restricted. I mean, we, that balance is always going to be pushing that $1 million mark because by law, by our EPA loan for the wastewater treatment, we have to have one year of reserve at all times for payments. So we'll, we will have enough money to make the final payment. I have a budget for it in 2025, I think, or whatever it's due. So, um, we have basically almost a year reserve in a lot of the bond funds. Um, not every one, but a lot of them, we do really, give a couple, two or three of them. So, um, I have a slide coming up about why is the cash on hand so high in some cases? Because it is higher than a lot of things, and that kind of explains a lot of that. Um, capital equipment, vehicle replacement, uh, each department has so much money allocated within that fund, we keep track of that. Um, and as we put money into that fund for insurance, vehicle or equipment purchases to save up, so we don't borrow for it necessarily. Um, we have so much allocated to departments, um, which, uh, again, the restricted fund, I'm sorry, the enterprise funds like water and sewer, that money can only be used in water and sewer, so we allocate that money toward their future purchases. So, and there, and there's other kind of examples. Forfeited funds, those are restricted, you can't do anything with those. Those are state and federal forfeited. Really, we don't get federal money too often. Two dollars, two dollars. Really, we out.
700% increase here, yeah.
I'm here with a dollar ten lasher, I don't know why I just raised it to two twenty, sorry. If somebody noticed that, thank you very much. There's really no reason for us to spend any money, but, okay.
One more.
Yeah.
You had 160 for insurance twice, just curious.
Uh, is it on there, lunch?
Yeah.
Um, that is not, uh, correct. So really insured.
I copied, I copied, it's double insured, no, I copied and pasted and, and accidentally carried that one over.
I, I mean, insurance is a good example. See, some of those funds are actually, you'll see in a second, they're actually ta, uh, are, are part of the tax, property tax. So the money goes into those funds from property taxes to be paid for insurance. Actually, about 145 is our insurance bill, say that. Um, but, I don't know, probably 40,000 is actually paid from water and sewer combined for their costs of that insurance. But we still budget the higher amount, um, it's, there is the balance. And, but sometimes we do transfer some money in there. If you're insured, you can transfer a few, you know, plenty of money for that. Um, pretty proud of this. Moody's doesn't upgrade a lot when it comes to non-home rural municipalities like us. Non-home, basically summarized, we, we can't tax our way into raising extra money. We'd have to have the voters approve that sort of thing. So it's very uncommon. I was at a conference once and they actually, somebody, not Moody's, but another bond company said, oh, wait, two of them have missed it. Uh, in these values in the state have been elevated, that was the 2018 one. And we were one of those. So, uh, and then to our surprise, a little bit of a surprise, 2023, they upgraded us again. So now Champagne's a lot, a lot better than that, but they also, a little different situation there with respect to ability to raise money. Um, but this is something that we, we really should be proud of, that they recognize that's pretty our efforts. Um, we maintain four months, some of this is just basic stuff, so people want to know. Four months cash reserves in general, general fund. And then some of the other funds as well, but not every fund. Four months cash reserve.
And that's by policy.
That's by policy, yeah. Um, maintains one-year reserve in MFT funds, I addressed that. Plus transportation capital fund, that's a separate fund that was up there. We keep about 250 in reserve at all times. Now, why do we do that? Now, we'd have to go back to appropriation ordinance if we really did have an emergency, but that's because, well, good example, quite a few years ago, Main Street was falling apart, and we had Chapin help us get some money from the state, the core block of Main Street to resurface that, that 400 block. Now we have a whole project, hopefully, coming up this summer. But we, we had to come up with $300,000 to, to do those emergency repairs. So that's why we do keep some extra cash in some of those ones, so, like transportation. Um, this is that slide I said was kind of coming up, just for, uh, reference there. We don't have a park district. Again, you know, speaking to anyone on Bolog TV, I think most people think, oh, I don't know how many people say park district all the time, because they do. We don't have a park district, it's Village Mohammed, Parks and Rec program, and we serve unincorporated areas. Um, and I, and I list this parks example is only village taxpayers are paid to support the parks, um, or, or through grants, donations. Um, uh, we do not collect, we do charge out of village residents a little higher rate for recreation fees, but, uh, that fee doesn't go back into the park budget. Um, so, um, programs fees, this is not an enterprise fund, but it is sort of one a little bit, because generally speaking, recreation department is self-supported. The fees they collect, the fees will go up as operational prices go up, and it kind of pays for itself. We do, we do transfer some money into recreations from our general corporate fund to help support that, but generally speaking, the fees that they charge on those programs. So, um, why so much cash, sorry about that. Uh, estimated beginning cash on hand includes required restricted reserves that we, that like bond examples, or police pension, I think it's a good example. Um, water and sewer enterprise funds, uh, also carries, carryover cash. So typically, you know, we don't, we may spend 85% of our budget, so then we have a lot of cash on hand as we run the year because of that. Uh, um, so, anyway, okay. Um. Understanding property taxes, I think you guys have a slide coming up to a little bit. Um, I think everybody in this room knows what I'm going to go through, but just because this is something that a lot of people get really confused about, especially at referendum time. Uh, so we thought we would kind of cover it a little bit in detail here. The amount you pay in property taxes, fair mark, fair market, or based on fair cash value or home, and that's really identifying, I hate to throw the township assessor under the bus, but the township is who assesses our property taxes in Mohammed, as in every place in the state. When your home value goes up, this is pretty elementary, the dollar amount you pay in taxes is going to go up. Uh, but hey, you're going to sell it for more, or the investment in that house that you have goes up. And the property tax in Illinois is each property shall be assessed at 33 and a third of fair market cash value. So what does that mean? You pay based on a third of your prospective property value is what you pay in taxes. In, uh, in the village residents have nine taxing bodies that, that, that share in that. Unincorporated residents, I say they have eight, because they don't have the village corporate tax, but some rural areas or some other areas may have drainage districts. I don't know if we have one around here, but some other areas of the county have drainage districts. So you may see another tax on your property tax bill if you have drainage district. Uh, I don't think village residents do, but.
Yeah, we do.
You do, I don't.
Okay.
You have that one up there, now that you said that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm pretty impressed, Paul.
I think it's a whopping 12 cents on my bill.
Yeah.
Um, okay, next slide. There we go, we've seen this kind of before, that's the dollar. This is fresh data, by the way. This is the tax rate for 2023 taxes payable that you're going to get a bill for here coming up in a week or two. So that's the new thing, it was 8.00 something, and now it's 7.944. And that's kind of a split. I think the school went up maybe a little less than a penny in terms of the share. Village came down 10.4 to 10.3. Um, you can see kind of where all the dollar goes of every dollar to get to that amount. So, um, go ahead. So median price of a home in Mohammed, that's what I was saying, by the way, the US Census Bureau. Um, I haven't seen the new update, but I'm here to tell you, it's going to go up, probably quite a bit. Um, and it did, you'll see a slide here in a second of how much it would go up before. So that is what you typically, a 275,000 average home pays, that's exactly what we're thinking with the new tax rate. Uh, um, 7.9, whatever, uh, 9144. There is so much each of those taxing bodies get. So we always tell people, if you're annexed, you pay about the same as you pay per, per county. So that's dead on exactly the same amount. Um, okay, next slide.
Patrick, on that, on that rate, been, like, talking about the tax caps for Champagne County, is that?
The school isn't subject to tax caps.
No, we don't.
The part, yeah, we're subject to tax caps. School, of course, most people here probably know you're not subject to tax caps because tax cap law, because, um, of Pine County, there's some parcels, Pine County. Um, tax caps is, help me out, Carol. Um, it's the, the, your cap, your rate, your property tax rate can't go up more than 5%.
5%, yeah.
Or the rate of inflation, whichever is less.
That is correct.
So when inflation was seven or 6.4 for the Midwest, couldn't go up. It was capped at five, but if inflation is 3%, then it's capped at three.
So if someone was leading one of the tax.
Champagne County, there's other counties, obviously.
Someone was leading one of the tax, leaving the file and published, because we'll never get what that money is that we put in the paper, because tax caps are not available yet. So that's something that we remember, when we see that, it's not what's.
Yeah, for areas with higher growth, so we runs into this too. When we do our truth in taxation and we rarely get anyone at meetings anymore, and when we did, maybe one person or two people call and when they see that paper advertisement, um, we're in those 30, 40% range with respect to our advertisement. It's not going to happen with tax caps. In fact, our rate went down. So in the end, it did go up 30-some percent, it actually came down. Um, so there you go. And it, and it does fluctuate a little bit around that 8, 80.8 something, it fluctuates a little bit. All right, um, there are some interesting things, fresh off the, um, Champagne County Association of Realtors, and I heard this in the paper, I think, the other day. With tightened supply, everyone let this sink in. Supply of homes, prices continue to rise, opportune time for sellers as the spring season begins. Look at that, 305 is the median price sold in Mohammed. That's why I think that 275, when the Census Bureau updates, will probably be, uh, hot higher than that in your rise. So, uh, not a great, it's good for when we sell our houses, but it means that people's tax bills are going to see rise. You know, you're probably going to get this tax bill here, a couple, we have a couple of people that are very knowledgeable on this, but you're probably going to tax bill here in a week or so and probably be 10% increase in your, that your property taxes are going to go up. So, uh, and then really that, honestly, that's not even close to the value of your home if you try to sell it, generally speaking, unless you recently sold your home and, and saw that because of the sale. So I think most people, it's not, but they're going to sell their home for, they're going to sell it for probably 20, 30,000 or the, whatever they're assessed at, so. All right, uh, next slide, there you go. There's that little tracking of median. This is an interesting fact, I think, just kind of a takeaway. The value of homeownership invested in Mohammed group is 48% in these eight years, I think since 2013, when I went back. 48.5%, but your tax rate stayed flat that entire time. Um, you're, you're, you're going up because of the value of that home is going up. In fact, right now here, as I said, it went down, so. So that's an interesting thing. All right, next. There is our revenue, now we're getting to some revenue numbers for us to try to get through this stuff pretty quickly. Um, those are our property taxes. Okay, those are all the different things we, um, assess for general bond, IMRF, fire, police pension. These are all things that are allowed to do by law. Plus, there is one bonded, uh, fund on there, and we keep that on there, because if we do let that go away, we don't get it back unless we go to the voters and say, vote for this. That, right now, is going to pay for downtown master plan phase one, which is the 400 block of Main Street. So that bond is listed on there, so. All right, next slide, so about 2.4 million. There you go, there's kind of a tracking, general corporate, general fund, and these are estimates, actually, these are from the, from the county. So these are what, we might be off a tiny bit of dollars on these, but, uh, for what we actually see, this is what the county numbers they gave us here. General fund supports, general operations, police, transportation, compliance, those, those core departments I told you about that fall under that fund. The bond is going to do street improvement projects. Prior to this, uh, project that we're going to start here, paid for the Eastwood Drive, big con, you know, big road, we did that in 2013. IMRF is, uh, levy, and, uh, that's. IMRF is levy and that's village pigeons for employees. And then road and bridge, road bridge maintenance, fire protection, that's an issue, we do get some questions on that once a while. That's something we're allowed to do and every taxpayer pays it, even though we have water for Sangin Valley up north either state. But that goes to support operational costs. So we can do that tax, we do do that. And that, you know, we have a lot of expenses every year related to oversizeding lines for fire protection, fire hydrants, everything kind of like that. There's police protection, that's different, pension down below that. Audit, our audit is actually in the eighty thousand dollar range right now, but that's what we do. If we wanted, we're only going to get so much as we all know. So we could play with these numbers, give more to audit, but it would take more away from somewhere else. So these are kind of where we settle. My bill insurance, we only bring in a hundred and eighty thousand, but, which is more than enough, like I said, because water and sewer actually pays for some of that hundred and forty-five thousand dollar cost. Street bridge is another, street bridge different from the other one, this is village, street bridge. Go on. Parks, hundred and sixty-five thousand, that's operational, but also capital projects. As a little bit, we've put money aside as to, even though it's funded through the police department, it does have a separate budget. We put money in capital expenses because the last big thing we bought was a new siren that serves north, mostly on corporate, but it serves north out there uptown. And we're saving up for another siren as well, for the sirens, I think. So, there, TIF, commercial port here, and then this is the big one too, East Mom TIF. So, wanted to cover one thing on that, to highlight that, to bring that up, as, as Mary said, we will cover TIF in the next one, but that last one there, out of that three point eight million, we passed through seventy-two percent in this fiscal year. Prior to that, we passed through eighty percent last fiscal year. Why is it going down? Well, the growth of the TIF as it becomes more commercial, we pass through fifty percent of commercial to the other taxing bodies, hundred percent of residential. So we're clear on that. That amounts to this next coming fiscal year, about two point seven, seven million dollars. And we're giving right back out, hundred percent of commercial, fifty, sorry, fifty of commercial, hundred percent of residential. So we've always said we pass through majority of the cost or of the tip money.
Carol, maybe just clarification, this came up, maybe at a few meetings, please for our perspective or not getting prompt estimates from the county, which obviously you see, you know, we collect this and then we write checks to all other taxing bodies and we're waiting on the county for our numbers and you're waiting for us to cut the checks. And now at some point, we're talking about cash flow for like, you guys depend on this. It's gotten better, but I mean, maybe we'll just put more on how that works.
I want to be able to write the checks for the passing of payments, teach the other taxing bodies that are impacted by the TIF. Need to have a detailed report from the county which shows me which of these counties are residential, which are paid out at a hundred percent and which are commercial or paid out at fifty percent. So sometimes it's a little challenging to get that detailed match to the payments they give to us so that I can run the population to see what we owe. But it has to prove somewhat, so that is what tends to slow those payments down is just playing a little argument in the commission.
Yeah, so if you think about this, we get a check for a million dollars in, in June, right, from the county for the TIF. They know what all that million dollars came from, they know every property that money won't pay that, here you go, village of Mohammed, here's your money. We have to see that detail to, to make that payment, we have to see. In the old days, before debt, they had a program, calculated automatic reports, but they refused, even though we've suggested they get a program, refused to do it. So we sometimes have to FOIA them after we get a patient.
Fortunately so.
And just about to leave that hanging there, just a waste of more discussion tonight is just to get rest assured that our board has been pretty aggressive on. If we don't have the information, you're going to FOIA, we're going to, we're going to push this because we can't get it any away because we know, not, I mean, for us, property taxes is not that a big component of our budget, for you, it's a huge amount, so we understand that, so. We've got to make a stance of being more aggressive, but they've got better, I mean, like anything else, it kind of goes in waves, right?
That's very true.
All right, so village revenue on the next slide, I'm going to continue, this is just more flow, right? This is state shared revenue and those are all the things and they give the fiscal year twenty-five estimates when we're at kind of sitting today of what we think that the revenue will be from the state. So the state gives us so much, this, of the income tax share. When the, when that was in contact with inactive Illinois, it was ten percent, that's what was promised, we're at six point something percent now. So there's the state given, then the state takes away. So that puts a pressure on local municipalities to try to come up with revenue to help with that, which we just can't do, you guys all know about that situation. So those are all the different state shared money that comes in. Motor fuel tax, of course, is the big one. Sales tax is really, we send it to the state or the business center state, they give us our one percent back. And we're pretty conservative, if we get a estimate, we don't know. So we, we can't just say, we'll take that estimate from our municipal league because that's what they approved the budget June one. So what if they cut it and then we're counting on all that revenue, they just reduced it. So we do get a little conservative, like sales tax, there's some uncertainty there, you don't know, sales slow down. So we always budget increase, but we just don't budget a huge increase every year in that, so. And then now this next slide, we'll get through these real quick, I hope. Income tax, there you go, where does the income tax, sales tax, personal property, they all go to the general fund. And from the general fund, it goes to support, we already covered it, police transportation. There's also that thing at the bottom, transfers to other funds. Now on the next slide, you'll see transfers to other funds, what does that mean? Well, recreation transfer, capital, transportation capital improvement fund, which funds our road construction, maintenance and constructions. Vehicle replacement fund and capital equipment, which funds vehicles and backhoes and the other equipment that we need. Economic development is funded through transfers from general corporate. The parks gets a little bit of transfer in addition to the other money we talked about that get, they get. And there's one on their public works, parks facility, there's a little bit of money we put in there for maintenance of that when we do a big, big, we replace all the windows, it's a hundred dollars. Trying to keep up with maintenance and not ignore on our buildings. So we have kind of a separate fund there that, that we work from that money. This next slide is motor fuel tax, transportation, street sidewalks, street light maintenance, road salt, that's about forty-five thousand a year right there. That's all MFTL, and that's how we fund that. Cannabis, I don't know what that is, for those who do, we kind of, again, we fund the police through many, many different ways. Utility taxes, we mentioned cannabis, we kind of say, okay, I have money, that fourteen thousand, whatever it is, we didn't even know we were getting it, it was surprising when we, we didn't know we got that. So, but we'll take the fourteen thousand, so we kind of just say, that's allocated toward police. Telecommunication tax, this is a number that keeps going down every year, although this year it actually went up higher than we budgeted, so we finally, they got to keep lower, rock bottom, and now it went up a little bit. That, that was used quite a few years ago to just, to also fund capital projects for transportation and streets. And guess what? We're all using cell phones, we're all using all these other things that don't, that don't pay long distance and getting your telecommunications tax. So that revenue, we don't have to go back to this slide, but that number was on there, it's like eighty thousandish. I think it probably, I'm going to say probably was in the two or three hundred thousand dollar range ten years ago. So I gave you an idea. Village revenue, some other revenue items, franchise fees, we get franchise fees. Actually, we're uncertain whether we get it from media copies or franchise from media copies, it's because the state.
State franchise.
State has decided they're going to franchise all that stuff now, so cut us out. So use of our right of ways, we'll probably, I, I will say it's probably because that's our state, they'll want the money. So, but for now, we get some, some of these fees, again, all the same stuff in general, corporate that we covered. Next one is utility tax, I already said, half police, half parks, that's kind of our policy. Hotel motel tax, very little amount, but you know, we all hope we're going to go hotel area someday, and I'm telling you, there's people working on it. And that's not news because there's rumors out there, I'm sure. But it's something that we continue to work on as well, working with developers who want to do that type of project. Revenue will go up a lot. One hotel motel, and that's, that's what we ran in for that a year, because we do have a hotel motel tax. Patrick, there are a few Airbnb's.
They do, they don't.
No, they're not, we, we would have to do an ordinance and regulate.
I can remember them.
And there's a lot of complications and that's why a lot of municipalities don't mess with that. So, number one, they violate your so far. So, this last one there. And then in fact, then I'm done. Village revenue, talk about water and sewer, again, this is an enterprise fund. I, I put a couple of things in here, a little bit of sarcasm maybe, take it how you want, but you know, are the two districts, we have our own water system for village residents. Village residents who live north either state are served actually by Sangin Valley. There, we get the payments, water, so we're two different funds there. Those go, they go to pay for general operations. General operations, facility operations, costs, insurance, cover that, about forty thousand a year insurance. Utility costs, which gone way up, way up. Chemicals, way up, maintenance or repairs, way up. Wages and benefits, up quite a bit, you know, not as much as those other categories. Vehicle equipment funds are, are just things that every account, every budget has to cover. Construction projects and debt payments for construction projects. And then transfers to capital improvement funds, water has a fund, wastewater has a fund. Then you get into expansion projects, wastewater has a big bomb that we ran towards, the thirteen, fourteen million dollar wastewater treatment facility. And water had one paid it off, now water's taking on a water master plan to replace a lot of older water main in the community. Be a, a few million dollar project. And here to tell you, all costs, all this new stuff is probably costing maybe twice as much, you know, that's my theme today. And here this, I just throw this in, water isn't enterprise, water and sewer solely supported by fees collected from customers. So people who are village residents that live north interstate don't pay a dime and don't support the water and wastewater department or any of our projects that have to be done. That's all paid for by users that live on this side of the interstate. What does that mean? Contrary to social media, current users are not paying for the cost to construct the infrastructure and do reasonable something. That's something that people just go out there and make that claim, say, oh, we're funding that. No, you're not, your, your developer is paying for all those costs and then whoever buys a lot is paying for those costs and that lot price. You repeat that, I'll just say that again. Contrary to social media, current users, again, users north, south of the interstate are not paying for infrastructure for new something. Either roads either, you know, those are paid by developers. But thank you for bearing with us.
Do you have a bond schedule? How much is outstanding, rates, maturities?
Not with me, but yes, yeah. Yeah. And, yeah, Carol, I'm returning my office lately, I was every day, so. There is one in here that, one of the appropriation things, nobody, you've noticed a lot, but maybe not noticed that one. The wastewater treatment, I'm sorry, the east, the TIF, the TIF. That number, interesting, eight hundred and fifteen thousand and this year that ends tomorrow. Three hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and the next is clear. Why? I don't know why, we don't know why, but that's the bond schedule. There's this one odd year where all of a sudden it sinks down to the, almost worth that, then jumps back up into the eight hundred thousand dollar range. So we have one little year of reprieve in that one, but, but yeah, that's an odd bond schedule that, then it goes right back up, so.
It was a cash flow by one minute at some point.
Might have been, I don't know if we've hit that transition from merging the two bonds to, to something, I don't know.
This was the first business year, we actually made principal payments on that issue. Up to that point, we had just been making interest payments and so now we're into it where we're actually making an interest in principal payments on that.
Right after this year, or after twenty-five fiscal year.
I've got a question, what have you bonded for in the past? Like are there two or three really large projects?
Well, we, the, the, the Main Street project will be about what we've bonded for eight.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred something thousand, so again, that's paid, we have to keep that in line with what that revenue comes from, from our property tax. So we can only borrow what that is. And, and so that dictates that and we're subsidizing that project, other areas, commercial port TIF, which is what that was done for as well. We've got that, we've got the East Mohammed TIF, South Mom Road project, went right direction, I think. We've got wastewater treatment facility. The, the waves, the water plant was paid for, but we're using what we, basically we use that payment to pay off a new EPA loan for, for the water main project I referenced. So I think we're going to do a lot of work, half of a water main master plan project will be done upfront. So we're basically going to keep the same payment kind of schedule that we're paying before on the treatment expansion in two thousand four or five. And just keep paying that amount, but now we'll go to the EPA loan. I guess that's a loan or less, but it's. And maybe I missed something, I missed something, Carol?
And we paid that one off. That was the one that we just finished, the, that whole project. We really only have, I think it's two or three bonds.
We do have the transportation now, parks and reces, we have that loan that was one point three billion. And that was twenty years maybe, a hundred thousand a year, a hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, I think it's ninety-three. And then the other debt that we have would be the elevated PK loans that we're using to work on infrastructure for wastewater.
Those are low interest loans.
Exactly, they're, they're much more appealing than, than actually wanting to bond on those. Maybe it works with us on those and we have it set up for twice annual payments.
Maybe, maybe the Jeff's question, I'm not sure if you're going here or not, but as far as how we collaborate maybe, because I didn't hear it on.
I was just more own for my own personal, nothing, not insinuating anything, just play out, what are the interest rates outstanding, you know? As we think about our future, what are you guys paying, what does that do to the citizen? That's where my.
Yeah, I mean, I could be wrong, but I think we're very, we're not highly looking for the jobs, Carol, rating is good and what's going on, but we're also really conservative, so. But we have to be as a non-home really, it seems like your time to turn around, Springfield's taking something else away from us.
Yeah.
Of like, we accounted off this for our budget and now poof, it's gone off. So only that four months of, of reserves, that's critical and every little line is, you know, that builds up, but it's needed. And I think a lot of people have this, we sit on a bunch of cash and just, we go down to Fish Nation, make and pull it out of the paper or something, right? We don't have, it's, it's either spoken for or it's, it's not that much in the grand scheme of things. Now, I think a lot of people just think that it should be more, you know, I paid so much, my property tax, we're only ten cents on that dollar or eleven cents now, whatever it is, on that property tax bill. So we would, don't sit on much, you know, do the best we can with the shoestring, but we have, right?
Yeah. I think, for instance, sales tax, I mean, one point two million, probably be around one point three or maybe a little bit more, we're going to budget one point two for. But Savoy is, they get the, the magazine team to news because that puts out that everyone probably got in their mail, maybe you get the business say, I think they're closer to four million, give you an example.
And that's a great example of, of the, like I said, you're right, grocery tax for us, that, that was huge, that's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar one for us, of what's going to be taken. one for us, of what's gonna be taken away. Um, that doesn't just doesn't get replaced by something else, that that goes away. And so uh, we've we've discussed our options, and we're hopeful that the law, when it does get adopted and and passed through, that they still give us the authority and ability to continue to collect that, like that, and keep it in Mohammed, and we'll probably move forward with that as far as what we feel right now. But again, that's a great example of like, it's it's just gone one day.
Well, I know I made the comment to repeat the part who pays for infrastructure development, right? My career as a public servant predates my career in real estate by a couple of years, and it came as a big shock to me getting realized that developers pay for, I mean, I always have the city road checks to do all that. I I I thought back in those days, I was a reasonably well-informed citizen, clearly I was not.
Well, we do kind of write checks, because when they're done building it, it's now us on us. So now we have it for forever. They have it for a couple of years, and now we have.
But I just, you know, I was back, Joe, average citizen, didn't know anything about public service, and I didn't know anything about real estate. I just always felt that when he came in and just started pouring time treat and started laying water line and sewer line, that's the way it works.
We'll get into the school finance a little bit now. If you haven't met Heather Smith, she's our chief school business official uh here in the district. And uh, helped us put together, obviously, uh, we worked on these, I think there's sixty slides, um, so.
Videos?
Yeah, and yeah, and videos. Please hold your questions and tell me. In all honesty, just shout out any any questions that you have, Heather, as we go through this presentation on our school finance one-on-one. So um, we are set up into into funds, and those are all given our our numbers. So we start with education funds, ten, and and move on from there. So the bulk of our our revenue and expenditures are are all used in our education fund, which is one of our restricted funds, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Um, so that's for all of our educational needs. The the lion's share of that goes to salaries and and benefits. So where does the money come from for for our education fund? Um, that's our evidence-based funding, which is a a different um mechanism that the state implemented. Well, it's probably been several years ago now, it seems like it wasn't all that long ago. Um, that takes a look at, takes a look at various measures when they decide what funding we're gonna get as opposed to. Prior to that, um, the main mechanism was what was called general state aid, and it looked at your EAV and your poverty level and and a couple of other things, and went from there. Um, obviously, our local property taxes and then other local revenue, um, corporate replacement taxes, um, and then in various grants that we receive as well. Our operations and maintenance fund, uh, to use for our supply and repair maintenance, salaries for our building and ground staff, so cleaning supplies, um, anything to do with with operations and and maintenance. Our revenue source for that is our our property tax levy. And then bonds, that's what we use for our debt issues, excluding debt certificates and alternative revenue bonds. And our source of revenue for that is our property taxes. Heather, do you wanna speak just a little bit um with, like, for instance, out here, uh, the difference between a debt certificate and an alternative revenue bond?
Sure. Both of our uh, both our debt certificates and our alternative revenue bonds are paid out of our sales taxes currently. We only have one bond that is actually paid for property taxes, which was from the MPE land. Um, the difference between our debt certificates and our alternative revenue bonds is alternative revenue bonds are not, they do not go towards our debt limit. Um, and as long as we have paid them every year, which we do. So um, and then our debt certificates, they do go towards our limit, uh, but they can also be paid with other revenue sources. So they're not, they're not just, we we allocate them, we we from the sales tax, but we can allocate them from other funds as well.
Thank you. So the the reason that it's important that that she mentioned that that does not go towards our debt limit is because we are limited on how much debt we can have, that's based on a percentage of our EAV. It's thirteen point eight. Other funds that we have are transportation fund, anything related to transportation. Uh, that's our supplies, repair, maintenance, salaries for our transportation employees, gas, diesel fuel, leases and purchases of us or or appointment. Our revenue source there is, we do, on August fifteenth of every year, we file our transportation claim that's due from the previous year, as well as our local property tax levy for for our transportation revenue. IMRF and our social security, um, that just goes for those expenses, and that revenue is our local property taxes as well. And then we have a capital projects fund for any permanent upgrade or structures on our school grounds, alternative revenue bonds and debt certificates. And our revenue source for that is our our county, so we sales tax, which we're very fortunate to have in the nation. The last funds we have are working cash, um, that's used to offset offset our operational funds, for lack of a better term. Um, I always thought of that as our savings account that we have, uh, in the event that we would need to transfer some money out of our savings into another fund. Um, so that can be used for education, O and M, uh, operations and maintenance, excuse me, and and transportation. Uh, this has been used every year for our our operations and maintenance fund, um, and our revenue source for that is property taxes, and that's limited to a nickel. Uh, Torque's used to prevent any kind of risk to the district, insurance and legal costs are examples of that, anything to do with safety. And that is uh, our revenue from that comes from property taxes as well. And our fire prevention and safety is based on a state assessment. Every ten years, we have to do a health life safety survey uh with our architect and working with the regional office of education, create a list, you prioritize those, and then if you need to, you can issue fire uh health life safety bonds. Um, and then that's how you address those different items that are more big ticket. Um, they, we can only spend money from our fire prevention and safety on uh items that have been unidentified. Our revenue for that is is property taxes as well. Uh, as far as as where our revenue comes from, sixty point one percent of our revenue comes from our local property taxes. Thirty-one point seven percent comes from state, and then eight point two percent of that of our revenue comes from that. So we we rely very heavily on our on our local taxpayers and our local tax dollars. Our levy information as far as our property tax revenue, so if you look up here, um, our current year uh rates in our education fund is two point four five percent or or two dollars and forty-five cents, for for lack of a better term, is how I like to look at that. And our revenue for this, from this levy that we just filled out was eleven million seven hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. So the the this is what we call a restricted fund, and with that being said, two forty-five is what our max rate is on that. The the, what it would be in the state of Illinois without a referendum for a unit district is a dollar eighty-four, uh, percent with referendum would be would be four. You can go all the way up to four. So we've had some referendum somewhere along the lines over the years uh to be at two point four five percent. So um, you can see that with fire prevention and safety, we can have a nickel. Um, our our income of that's going to be two hundred and and thirty-nine thousand dollars, three hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Uh, without referendum, that's the max, it's a nickel, you can go up to to ten cents. Um, same with our our operations and building maintenance, um, percent without referendum is fifty cents. We are at fifty cents, you can go up to seventy-five cents. Um, transportation, by statute, that's limited to to twenty twenty cents for a unit district. Uh, if you're a high school district or a K A district, that's twelve cents. You can raise that as needed, um, and then we get into, if you move on down, um, you can see that the bottom three that are percent without referendum are as needed, those would would be what we would call our unrestricted funds, like Patrick mentioned earlier. So um, certainly, we we have to be responsible stewards of our taxpayer dollars, so we wanna make sure that we're not carrying large balances in our municipal retirement or social security or our for uh funds. Um, because one, that's what we have to spend it on anyhow, so it doesn't make any sense to try to to build those up. And two, we wanna try to keep our tax rates as low as we can. So overall tax rate uh is four two five six five, um, and our revenue is at twenty million dollars. Then you bring in the bond interest, bond and interest payment, um, which is set, and then that comes in at four sixty-three. So that's a little bit about what our our levy information looks like and how we get our valuable tax dollars, what wouldn't be requested. Um, as Patrick mentioned earlier, what makes up your tax bill, we look at our village of Mohammed's ten point three percent. Heather does not like this slide, um, and and gets fifty-eight point five uh cents for of every dollar um goes to this. So the lion's share of our property tax bills come here to to help us operate our school. Um, our percentage of revenue by fund, based off of our twenty-two twenty-three um actual results, um, from from our local property taxes, fifty-six percent of our local property taxes go into our education fund, eleven percent into our operations and maintenance, two percent for bond payment, four percent for transportation, um, seven percent IMRF, one percent working cash, eight percent toward, and one percent health life safety. As far as our state funding is concerned, ninety-seven percent of our state funding goes to our education fund, three percent um goes to our transportation overall.
And you guys, you you own your bus fleet?
We've got a little bit of both, right? We we lease and own a couple of buses.
Yeah, our, the majority are leased.
A percentage of expenses for Mohammed Seymour for our district, seventy-eight percent of our our um expenditures go to salaries and benefits, ten percent purchase services, eight percent supplies, and four percent cattle. So that's one thing that that's very important to to realize is that, you know, our our most valuable asset are our students, and um they are um cared for all day by by caring adults. And when you look at times getting tough and if there has to be reductions, um, you don't balance budgets by cutting the pencil budget by ten percent or or the cleaning supplies. I mean, that's um, in order to to balance budgets and things like that, when you look at seventy-eight percent of your expenditures for salaries and benefits, you have to reduce staffing. As far as where do we compare with K twelve area schools, um, with regard to tax rates? Um, this is just a a synopsis of of around Champaign County. Um, you can see that that we are in the the bottom half, um, and uh with Palona Unity being the lowest and and the combination of Ranthool City and Ranthool Township High School being the the highest. If you'd like to peruse any of this, certainly we can. Um, also, you can see there the percent adequately adequately funded average. When I talked a little bit ago about our state funding being an evidence-based funding model, they look at at various indicators um about how much money you're bringing in um from from local property taxes based on your, what the staffing levels that you have and your EAV, and they come up with a number uh that you should strive for a hundred percent. And we are at sixty-five percent adequately funded, um, with with it, by the by the state's uh rating on that. So that means that that we are operating with much less than what the state would recommend that we have financially. You wanna explain that anymore?
Yes, and you'll notice also, um, the districts that have the lower um tax rates, they also are a lot higher in adequacy. As a matter of fact, we are the lowest inadequacy out of all those districts. Which means that we we have less per student to spend um with our income sources.
Is that because of demographics? I mean, what's, I guess, what do you do to lobby for more?
Now, the state has been pretty good about increasing our evidence-based funding, um, monies, revenue over the years. But it's it's essentially an EAV issue, correct?
That's EAV, and we're our growth, because when we continue to grow, we're basing it off of last year's numbers. So that affects it, but then also we got our property taxes, um, uh, and just any, all of our income together. And what happens is we're tier one, which is the, I know, most needy, one of the most needy districts. So they tried to give us more money ever seen later than not just us, but all tier one schools, more money here to try to get us to where we need to be. We have not seen that increase much, maybe like a percent in the last few years, just because of our growth.
And what's concerning about that, though, is that if if our corporate personal replacement tax goes down, and that could affect other school districts, and then more people go into tier one, then we'll see a decrease in in funding, because there's more people chasing that that piece of the pie.
One of the big issues we have is even though our property taxes are higher, our density of kids in houses that need to be educated is also way higher. Does that make sense? We've got more kids per house. So the fact that we're collecting high property taxes is is very much is more of an upset than that, that our percentage of kids in houses is much higher.
I think we talked about that last night, growth, right, as far as the. Yeah.
Um, one thing that we talk a lot about uh is we look at, when we're comparing test scores and things like that, we look at Morton and and Dunlap, um, oftentimes Mountain Zion, and then as far as as locally, we'll take a look at Monticello. And Heather took a look at funding adequacy comparable to similar similar to the ranked districts. And as we just mentioned, we're about sixty-six percent of adequately funded, and you can see some of them. Some of them sell ourselves to our our um within ten percent and then quite a bit. Um, education fund revenue per pupil, um, when you look at at, you know, the cost of business to educate students, that's our education fund, and that's what we spend that money on. Um, so our our revenue per pupil in our avenue, you know, our education fund as compared to those uh is is somewhat close and considerably lower as well. And that's all we have for tonight. We just wanted to to give a a brief overview of of where our money comes and and where it goes, and uh just a few comparisons.
My understanding is that Monticello has a very large amount of personal property.
Yes.
Of like other areas, corporate property.
Yeah, that's what.
They point to why they are so.
Yes, 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 it's uh the um, the phone company or whatever, they just have their corporate. They don't own the power, but then there's also that that corporate office when you come in.
And how long are we gonna have that, though? Isn't that drive back to like seven years or something?
No, it's been, well, it's been around quite some time. Heather, is, do you know when that would, I mean, yeah.
Right, yeah, it was probably, it happened when um the corporations were able to earn, they weren't paying for taxes with everything in the in the building. So and then basically, it was replacing that about all the components of the building. I don't, I can't think exactly when it happened.
I think they were asking like, how long that extends, we know, like.
Something more years.
It's a whole, I think, yes, I think so. It's a whole heart of ours.
And just go keep going. So is the takeaway, though, that it's not apples to apples, you put these charts?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's all you think you're you're district.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And a lot of people like look for benchmarking and comparisons, but.
Yeah.
There's so many other layers.
Right, you you're right. So so for instance, you throw in at a a Monticello that's got the CPPRT, the replacement tax, or you look at a a Breakwood that's got a power plant, right, or or Clint, um, you know, um, we had what we call, where I came from, the chemical quarter, several major factories, right, around six, um, you know, that builds a huge players in that as well. So, yeah, certainly everything has a different story, yeah.
But it's based on all the same things, you know, how much revenue you have in other schools. So if you look at it, we're supposed to put a budget at a hundred percent, so we are.
Just a question, I guess, and maybe just from a, well, I guess, her in the past, I don't know if it's true, but have we, did we, I mean, we had to fight for tier one? Was there, was there a point in time that it was actually being debated, tier one or tier two for Mohammed or no?
Would.
No, we we moved, I mean, we happened in tier two as at some point, but it's it's based off of the percentage. So I think right now the break uh the break off is seventy-three percent. So, you know, and they actually raised that a little bit, so, you know, other schools could, you know.
But we have fluctuated from tier one to tier two, and I have a tier one.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, it's gonna be a very thrilling topic.
So the. So the, one takeaway is we both have a shared interest in in continued focus growth. Being commercial, specific growth, we obviously, we take. Those numbers that you just presented there at last, like Mount Sello, that's incredible. So I think, I think something that we discuss as a board quite often is the type of growth that we want to see happen. And it's clear to me that our bodies need to be working together to to continue to make that, find a way. Because right now, from your standpoint. Category listed, property tax, property tax, property tax, property taxes. And how often can you go back to that as well? So I think, I think one thing that we talk about a lot is for certain years, you know. The village needs the district and the district needs the village. And we've never had more important time than that, right? Obviously, some things probably get put in the book because these things don't happen.
And I think we said before, I've said, I mean, we we are not incentivizing residential. It's happening, right? It sounds like from your perspective, it's okay as long as there's like one or zero that gets in that house. But our demographics are talking about much more kids per rooftop than other districts, we want to call it. So it's kind of almost that same theme, right? I mean, you certainly want more residential, but.
Well, new construction comes with a higher, a higher cost, therefore a higher value, therefore taxes, so that helps us. They also come with more amenities. Yeah, you get your one more hit, so that kind of washes, I think, out. I was gonna say, certainly commercials is is where we've been all, right? That helps both sides.
I was gonna say about two hours ago, Carol, Carol Temple, I said Carol a couple of times, but never really introduced my name to her, Carol Temple. But about two hours ago, I was eating all across to her office and I was like, why is the TIF revenue, East Monmouth TIF revenue going up? Like, it's going up pretty good next year, like, I don't know, it's two or three hundred thousand in projections, tally. I said, but now our percentage of what we pass through is going from eighty to seventy two. And then I'm like, oh, it's going up because of commercial, well. I mean, and you keep this in mind, you're not seeing all that commercial yet of some of that stuff on the one thirty corridor because it's not fully assessed. And it's like, wait a second, that's a good thing. I mean, because you're getting less passed through, yes, but that commercial growth wasn't there before. You're getting half of it still, you know, that's being passed through in that TIF district. So, you know, there, any growth, even if it's getting half of it, just like with us. You know, we'll have this TIF discussion next time, but it's the TIF is functioning like it's supposed to be functioning. Difference here in Mohammed, I'm like, I don't think we have any examples.
There's examples, but I'm not using. The whole state, we're pretty darn unique. We're pretty darn unique in that the the current arrangements is is not, it's unheard of.
And challenging, but.
It's a challenger. So it's if it works the way it's supposed to, it even works better than Mohammed.
Well, mine mine goes to just even with the commercial development and like we talked, you know, a community didn't work and play. I think amenities too, because I think and put put myself in my seat, you know, I have a property in Mohammed. We contribute, you know, a higher amount of property tax, but I'm I'm net zero into the school district. Like, I have no children contributing.
You're our favorite resident.
What, but to me, that's where the commercial development and the amenities become so important. Because you want to keep us here and not have me move. And I bring somebody buys my house and brings four net new kids into the children into the school. So I think the development and the amenities become so important to keep the residents who aren't here because their children are in school.
Great, great point. What person, and maybe this is brought up when Jordan was distracting me, I didn't hear it. But what percent of your revenue is sales tax?
We get about three point two million a year, so they have to.
Just curious.
Do you have any idea what's going on? Going to be developed across from McDonald's, their one fifty.
I was hoping that was like the leading.
I think we've always said that, you know, until the, until a landowner is is got a property sold, it's really truly the same. If you would have asked me two months ago, well, actually last fall, who said it's gonna close in the fall, here here we are. And and two or three lots have not closed. So we've done some actions at the board level to try to put things in place with respect to the confidence of the properties and stuff like that. That were figured out by by a potential buyer, the last of which we did last week. So not kind of what we think, at least one of those properties will probably sell pretty quickly here and get developed. So I mean, I just go to to the rumors.
Hopefully one of the rumors turns out to be true.
I will say this, that I do feel my, kind of very, again, I I do feel like the landscape is sort of changing on one fifty. Pretty rapidly, it it changed a few years ago, maybe ten years ago started changing, maybe fifteen years ago, you started seeing commercial. And I think this landscape is gonna change significantly in the next couple of years. In addition to what you've already seen, you know, that South Mama Road, phase two will open up soon. You know, I think we'll start working on phase three eventually, an intersection by McDonald's, which is our hope. New intersection there with with stoplight, I think that will open up quite a bit. So the more we get that stuff, begin using TIF funds, the more other effects will happen with respect to property taxes. You're gonna see some stuff over on this side or a eastwood corner, you know, some of those properties there that are. And house was, you know, demolished. I mean, that's good or bad, depending on your your perspective on it. But the result of what gets built there, if it gets built, say that. But the result of what gets built there will be exciting for the community.
Thank you, was talking about amenities and one of the things that I would love to see, and I know we've done some of it, especially with the tennis courts, is just facilities. I think when we were talking about our peer group, if you look at a at a community like ours, our facilities are drastically lacking for our peer group. And I think of our kids and sports and how much activity there is, every, you know, of all the sports that take place, we are just so lacking. And I think there's a very good first step with the with the tennis courts. What do you see, I know there's thirteen acres there.
I feel about pickleball.
Uh, I'm not a pickleball fan, but.
I mean, I think that you just moving it out, so, bro, is a good thing.
It's getting utilized.
Yes. Don't tell the tennis players that, because they don't like.
To your point, though, I think, who knows, Senator Rose and and obviously, I think from his perspective is is is, uh, what do you wanna call it? The money that he can get out of his district, he's always looking for that win win, right? So not looking for the village or the school, or I think you gotta call it joint projects. I think that was a great example, we kind of pivoted and we did that. We had to do more of that. Right, you're, well, for for obviously Senator Rose, but also to be more competitive with other grants out there. He can help also a lot of the others too. So I think we're on that that boat too. But for us, so then you can call these all the numbers, we're, we gotta recover now from that tennis court. That doubled in price from when we started day one, just having discussions like, hey, is this even a thing? How much does that thing cost? We thought this and then no, it was real this, uh, kind of inflation, uh, committing climate. So we'll see.
We have like. In in the budget, I mean, a hundred and eighty thousand in parks. So we'll slowly build that fund back up and figure out what kind of grant monies out there to do pickleball. I think kind of next, we've done phase one of barber, we've done the tennis courts, pickleball is huge now in the movie. Definitely a priority, I think I'll let them, may I finish my comments, I'll send them up for this comment. But as you know, we talked about shared use of of your facilities and agreements on that. It's worked out great, but, you know, I forget the number, but using the gymnasium space, our, I think, when I moved here twenty plus years ago. Basketball program for Parks and Rec was eight weeks long of practice, now it's five. Because the 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 usage of school facilities has grown with school needs. So we've tried, you know, advisory referendum, I'll let him set that up. But, you know, we've tried to, problem is, of course, you know, our district residents are the only ones that would fit that bill to pay for. Facilities that we need for our own program.
But to, but to piggyback off what you asked, I think thirteen acres and the rec center are big projects that we have in our view just down the road. Probably money.
We had advisory referendum.
I don't know if that's what you're getting at or what, but.
A little bit, you've hit on it all, it's more, where does the partnership come into play? We're both here to serve our communities, how can we be more efficient like we were?
Yes, I think that to where you start that and where we're coming, maybe ended and where we're, kind of, here to be next, based on the referendum or advisory referendum is. Is we hit a certain point in growth where, yes, we can partner, we can piggyback, but at some point, you're gonna need a hundred percent of your facilities for your use. We're gonna need X amount of percent for our use, so we can find ways. But I would say if we went out and built, you know, eight basketball courts right now, you know what? It would serve us for a while, but eventually, you know, we could share it, but eventually that will fill that space, right? So I think it's it's kind of a push and pull of like what we can partner on with. We just need to find those niches of where it makes sense for both of us to, here the immediate need, we can both benefit tomorrow.
I think we would be stunned if either of us went out and built eight basketball courts, how quick we could fill up eight basketball courts. It would happen.
They'd be all used right now, if we had eight basketball.
If the village had eight of our own, it'd all be in there.
Yeah, do you, I would, which is, do you have to be the home rural community in order to add that, parks, department? District department or park? That's a tax.
That'd be a tax, that'd be my referendum. Okay, has that been talks of that or?
So there's there's pluses and minuses of that. And this predates, I mean, this has been around for a long time, I think. I think in every administration or or different folks and at least my, you know, you need to look at and and struggle with it. Because there are pluses and minuses of all, nobody wants more tax on their debt, right? So I think, and maybe I'm looking at the end of year or summer, I mean, did it fail like?
Nineties?
Yeah, late nineties or mid nineties. So it failed, I mean, but again, that's a long time ago, but it's a great example, I mean.
I think to Jeff's point, though, like every community we go from travel sports, it's like light years apart from where we're at. And we have folks come in and they're like, whoa, we heard Mohammed's a great community, and they're like, whoa, so.
It's got some age on it. The field house was great when it was built and and I think you're right.
Same, I just.
Yep, very pretty place.
Personally, I don't, I don't live within the village, but I, you know, I could see tons of family supporting that, maybe in this age.
Well, we thought, so, so the advisory referendum was shot down pretty early.
You're talking about the, that was the.
Rec center.
Rec center.
Yeah, yeah, it was predominantly a rec school, it was.
Where are we with the teenagers?
We've got a master plan that we've we've worked through, so it's kind of getting in the queue of of things. Um, we think that, I can't speak for Dan tonight, but you know, obviously pickleball, our goal is to have pickleball and tennis when we move out of that project, separate facilities. And then we can only afford one, we pick tennis, it's all benefit for us and the and the district.
I think it becomes that education piece that we've talked about. I I think the perception is that there's all this money that we just paid for it and it's it it doesn't exist.
Well, the other one, the other thing we, when we did the vote or the the test, the water, it's only the village people that would be paying for that. So that's a hard sell too, right? So it's, you know, only the village people don't want to pay for a pool and a rec center when there's other folks that are outside the village that are going to be able to use it.
But I think sure rates would be choices, I, yes, use it, right.
Well, well, my thought though, too, is that that was so specific, like you hear people, well, I don't like this plan, but it's just a fund. So I'm looking at it like, we can, we can use this fund for various things, it doesn't have to be one thing, yeah, so.
Well, you've got people who don't want to be fun, they could be used for more different things.
Yeah.
What are you gonna use it for?
There's there's.
Go aside with it.
And it's, and people are gonna go aside to it, I don't know.
And I don't know, I don't.
Or a fault issue.
Well, maybe this is the elephant in the room, but I'm excited because it's this the truth and it's our truth to swallow. But this community has voted no on a lot of things. Voted no on the this pink white sales tax. And how did you pay for everything out here? That's sales tax, so same how everybody else. Outside the kind of, outside Mohammed community, they got that through because we benefited from that. So we've just gone through our advisory referendum, you've gone through two, right, from the school. I mean, this community had a hard time getting over reinvesting our community and get, maybe that's the elephant in the room, it's my own personal opinion expressing, but. It's it's gonna have to come time as people go to the, hey, are we investing in this community or not? Because they are going down, will go down there, right? You just mentioned, I mean, our facilities used to be up here and now we're like, mm, we're not there. I mean, my kids are dying, but.
Which is why I appreciate the, the, are you knowing?
I didn't know exactly.
I was just gonna say that the corporation side of it, the corporate taxes, that to me is, if I can't, if we can't put that burden on residential, it makes me feel a lot better. If we can get that tax money to be someplace else, that's gonna make me feel a lot better.
It's it's a little bit different than that, it's, your kids are out, you still need to invest in the community if you want your property to continue to appreciate value.
And I said that, I mean, I'm happy to pay it forward. I mean, I moved Mohammed, I never paid a referendum, I never go for a referendum, my kids benefit them, I'll I'll pay it forward. But again, that's me personally, I think we have a lot of folks that just don't feel that way. And and maybe it's you, you come in, you reap the benefits and you move out, if that's your strategy, okay. But I think we got a lot of people who who've been here and stayed here.
It's been garbage, I mean, here tends to be wonderful people, and here people come back, yeah, so.
So now we're, we're not gonna decide this tonight, but I think the village, we've been very forward in in trying to look at different possibilities to increase economic development. We we have a position that we're trying to hire. We haven't hired a, well, a specialist, but we're seeking that. But we really want to take a strong look at how these two bodies could work very specifically together in that area. Because again, I go back, go back to the point, school district benefits as much or more from economic development than we as a village do. So I would just throw that out there and I would be, you know, personally willing to impart that. I just think that we, our two organizations can really help drive that. And, you know, setting goals, what what do we, what do we want?
It's, I mean, saying that, it's on the, it's on the calendar event.
Yeah, what, but maybe, so I can see the future, but I don't know.
I think that what we've started with, and maybe it's more about the transparency to the community understanding, it's not new discussions. I mean, we've been in attitude discussion, but I think everybody wants to see if, you know, whatever, more transparency out the open now, if that's what we're doing here. But you have to have a full understanding of all these other components before we can say, okay, here's what we want. If we all say, let's go look forward that direction. So if we go out with that first, it's, you know, either people may or may not believe it's a good idea, I don't know, right? But we have to kind of set that that foundation up first. So we'll get through the TIF, we'll get through, what was the last one before goals?
Tip.
You know, we have one hundred.
One hundred percent.
I think to Jason's point, what I.
Thing is, planning, wasn't that like future plan?
Yeah.
We have our.
Like master planning, get those aligned together, right?
For more community, yeah.
So those are, so to Jeff and Jason's point, that that's that community plan where where we come together, we figure out where we have, you know, consensus of like the common things. We we have different missions, but we serve the same people.
Sure.
So in our comprehensive plan and then your strategic plan, which I think you're either updating or will be updating. That's where I think hopefully we're gonna find that alignment. If we can find some commonalities in our two plans, then it goes in that next last session, common goal setting where, hey, here's where you have the commonalities, here's the direction we want to go. And let's point the the boat that way and let's go, let's rub together towards that goal. Will we be there today if we wanted to? I I think so, I mean, but we have a lot of other things for wrestling, you're wrestling with some big referendums and that's tough. So, you know, I think we're all kind of patiently working through this process.
I I remember you told me one time that the wheel. I I remember you told me one time, the the wheels of these things turn real slowly. So it's, you know, a lot of people are really excited about it, like you gotta go through those processes the right way, so.
So it's a lot of time and energy, and if you just don't do it right, it's just gonna be disappointing with the results, right? But does that make sense? I mean, is that the YouTube we're going, I think?
Yeah, we only have two quarters to wait.
We can skip by, no, or whatever, but.
It takes time, Mr. Tom.
I think the development, especially business type, commercial type stuff, that's that's a no brainer. You all see that, we'll get there.
Well, I was literally to the village one a little bit, I mean, we are going through that process, we have an economic development specialist posted. We've moved beyond that or at least passed that from our own work perspective and looking at the incentives that we are provided for commercial, or not just commercial, but. Again, uh, sales tax driven driven activities, and we were way behind the eight ball of being competitive. So we're trying to get up to that point where we are not competitive with with the landscape of of projects coming in, uh, targeting Mohammed, not just one of the next community or whatever. So that's happening now, I think, too, maybe, uh, we can continue these discussions, uh, internally too, but. Finding those incentives of what incentives, maybe you guys, you know, would be able to participate in would be probably helpful information for us. We're trying to come up on all of our own right now. You know, if if the district is is serious about X, Y, Z, we want to hear about, so I think if we can combine together and even up that package more. But again, we're just trying to go and learn it right now, so. And this is, and that's all new to us, and this is basically in the last three or four months, we've been talking about this pretty heavily. Um, so that's that's a different angle or trajectory that we're on for for economic development, what we're trying to do to incentivize it, so.
I think in the absence of a referendum too, that's the best, best thing to shoot for. Bankroll, and we've been asking for a long time, ever since I've been about, short.
Growing pains, this is plain and simple growing pains, I can remember back in the eighties when they started talking about a test history. And there was plenty of taxing bodies, the school was one of them, said absolutely not, fire department said absolutely not, I can remember those arguments, that was the merit of time. I mean, it took them two or three years to get the test history, to get everybody on board to to listening enough to find out the benefit. The benefit is not tomorrow, the benefit is years and years and years down the show, and nobody can look that far. They wanted, damn, I can't get it now, I don't want to do it. You know, now all those folks are gone, that's the way, and now if we look at this, so my product did work. You know, so it just takes, uh, the wheels are just very slow.
But I hope.
Oh, yeah.
I love the fact, like to the point, that we can all come together and involve, like, I just feel like this is great, I think it speaks volumes to the community. Because we do all have to be on the same page, and I feel like we are, I really do. I hope.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone in this room. I was gonna say, my my family's roots are deeply planted in Mohammed, we're not going anywhere. And I just appreciate everybody who's in this room, they're involved in this community and going forward, just it's a great place. To make it a great place, a better place to live, so thank you all.
Not now, from the business, right? This was a great conversation there. Any further business? No further business, is there a motion to a vote? Is there a second?
Second.
Who's seconded?
No.
I don't know.
Bill.
Um, we can do a voice vote, all those who say yes, say aye.
Aye.